Okay, thank you everyone for joining us this evening. We are going to get started with our workshop. We have three items to go through this evening before we start our regular meeting. So I'll turn to Emily for the first item.
Thank you. The first item is a sketch plan review for Biddeford-Saco Old Orchard, Biddeford-Saco Country Club. And it's for bridge repairs as follows. Bridge one near hole 10, a bridge two near hole eight, bridge three near hole three, and bridge four near hole 18. The site currently uses a golf course, about 66 acres of land in the low-density residential district. Portions of the site are along the Goose Fairbrook in the Resource Protection District. And the reason why we're looking at this tonight as sketch plan is because the applicant has requested this first step and plans to bring forward a conditional use application for these bridge repairs. This is looking at recreation uses involving minimal structural development in the Resource Protection District as we put here on per two, per section 23307 of the city's ordinances. So far, we sent the application to different departmental reviewers. We received a comment from the police department, no comments at this time. Other comments will be sent along to the applicant. Right now, the planning board is asked to review this, hear from the applicant in workshop, and then provide some general non-binding feedback. And we will share that as well with the applicant.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Emily. Board members, any questions right now before we turn to the applicant? I'm not hearing any. We have someone here from the country club, right?
Cody Berkworts.
Can you come up to the mic and we'll just grab you on the audio? Thanks.
Yep. Cody Berkworts, Biddeford-Saco Country Club. I'm the president. Thank you all for having me here tonight for this workshop. Thank you for your service that you do to the city of Saco. I grew up in Saco my whole life, been a member of Biddeford-Saco since I was 13 years old, 20 years. And this is a big project for us, the bridge project of all of our, all of our bridges. We've been working on this for about 24 months now and really getting to the point where, you know, going through the permanent process and so on and so forth. And we got two professionals that we've been working with, Heather Hayes of Sewell and Brian Edmonds of T-Buck Construction who we've hired and is going to help us tonight with some of the questions that you have as part of the application process. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Heather, anything to add? Nope. Okay. Okay, so, board members, this is sketch plan review. So we do have some documents in our packet here. Any questions right now for the applicant or the representatives that are here?
Yeah, Madam Chair, my only question was, are the bridges the same size as they currently are? There's just new, just new bridges. Okay.
Okay. We're getting a yes for that answer. Just for audio. Okay. And Emily, so far, no city departments have voiced any questions, comments?
No, and if there are questions or comments, we'll forward those along to the applicant as well.
Sorry, one more. So it's just a matter of taking out the old bridge, putting a new bridge down?
Heather, if you want to come up, yep.
Yes, so, bridge one, or, the bridge at hole 10? So, bridge one and bridge two, the full superstructure will be demolished and replaced with a new one. And then bridges three and four are just getting a deck and railing replacement with, yeah, more environmentally friendly.
Okay.
Bridges.
Are you planning to do this work during like your off-season?
Yeah, yes, we're hoping. Yep, we're hoping to start in November. Yeah.
I don't know how golf works. Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay, and there's no like electrical components, there's no like lighting fixtures, nothing along those?
There's a couple utilities on bridge one and bridge three, but we have a plan for dealing with those.
Okay, seems straightforward. Did you have any specific questions that you were looking for feedback on tonight?
Um, no, not that I can, not that I can think of off the top of my head.
Glenn, did you have something?
Yeah, Madam Chair, thank you. I have something for the board to consider. Where these structures are existing, and they're going to be rebuilding two of them, replacing two of them, it's not like it's a new use. I would like to ask the head of conversation about granting, granting them exemption from planning board review.
Okay, we can certainly discuss that, and maybe Emily has some thoughts on it as well.
Are you looking for thoughts? We brought this, we recommended that it go through conditional use because of the way it's worded in our ordinance, so we're going with the more strict interpretation. If you'd like me to bring up the conditional uses in Resource Protection Zone chart, maybe that would be helpful and give the board some direction. As far as an exemption process, I'm not aware that our ordinance allows us to have an exemption process. But if it falls under a different use, certainly you can indicate that you feel it falls under a different use.
Yeah, that isn't what I found. What you declared it is what I also found. But it just seems like it's a waste of effort on both parties to hear this, understanding it's, it is a conditional use. And I would understand if there are four new structures, but they're not. They're rebuilding two and replacing two.
Any other board comments? Joyce?
I mean, I do have to say, I agree with Glenn certainly on the two that are being, it, it sounds like it's repairs as opposed to even replacement. We certainly aren't usually asked to weigh in on repairs to structures that aren't enlarging them in any way.
So, the planning department and the planning board is not the zoning administrator for the city, that rests with code enforcement. So we can certainly ask the code enforcement director for his opinion as he is the zoning administrator for the city. But I'm not aware of an exemption process. But I don't think that this board needs to opine on whether or not there's an exemption tonight. I think you can give the feedback to the applicant to work with code enforcement and confirm that it does fall under this use and not a repair and replacement use.
Okay, any other questions or comments for the applicant, for city staff?
Yeah, for the applicant, it's, this is pretty much a like-for-like replacement, is it not? Except utilizing modern materials versus the materials that are currently there?
The bridge one is going to be a steel superstructure, but it's going to be coated, so.
Right.
Yeah, it's just going to be like, it's, everything's being replaced in kind.
And then the other two, that you're just replacing the side rails to make them safer, right?
It's the railing and the deck.
And the decking.
Yep.
Right. But other than that, the structure stays the same and.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm with Glenn and, I mean, obviously, we can't just say we're not going to listen to it, but it seems like it would be a good idea to work with code to see if indeed it does need to come back to us. I mean, if they were building a new bridge, yeah, sure, but it's just like-for-like replacement with modern materials, so that's what I would suggest as well.
Okay, we can pass along our feedback? Anything else? Okay, not hearing any. Thank you, everyone, for joining us for that item. Okay, moving on to the second item, this is a transportation and impact fee study update.
So just to give a little bit of an intro to this, we put a memo in the meeting packet. Public Works and Planning have been collaborating on a scope of work for a transportation master plan and impact fee study is what we're going to be terming it. It's going to be really important for the city moving forward. The city council has put budget funds toward it, toward fiscal year '24, so we do have some budget funds set aside for it. So Pat is going to lead us off in a PowerPoint presentation here we've put together, and then if you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you, Emily. It's great to see you all. I haven't been before you, and I probably haven't met a few of the newer members, but thank you for everything you do, as the last applicant said. There's a lot of growth going on, and I just want you to know that staff really appreciates all the hours you put in and all the work you're putting in as the city grows. I'm really excited that I think we're giving you, what we're proposing is a study that will help you have a tool in the toolbox to make really clear decisions and have applicants know what sort of transportation improvements are going to happen in the city of Saco over the long term, so that everyone comes to the table knowing what the fee structure is and what improvements are slated for which order and when related to vehicles, pedestrians, and bicycles. So, I'll just read the first slide, if you want to go to the next, the next slide, and then we'll get into more of a conversation about it. But, "The purpose of this study is to identify current and future transportation improvements necessary to accommodate safe vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle mobility as the community grows. The goal is to create a fair, clear, and transparent impact fee system so the city can collect equitable fees to help fund these planned corridor improvements." So, I've been in the city long enough that I've seen us go from a capital plan of $65,000 to spend on every facility, road, utility, in the whole city. That was all we had one year. I'm proud that we've come a long way since then as a community, and we're now funding it in the five to eight million dollar range, leveraging many different sources of income, sources of funding, including TIFs, grants, state, federal programs. So, we have a very robust capital program. But it is built around what we have today and a very robust asset management system to replace the right roads, the right utilities, the right facilities at the right time. What we're lacking is that roadmap to tell us when to add a sidewalk and which is Jenkins Road, is a Jenkins Road sidewalk or a Ferry Road sidewalk more important. I don't have the tools to sit there and advise you or the council on that. So, that's part of what this study is meant to do, is let's look at our connectivity, let's look at our growth pressures on different areas of our corridors and network, and come up with systematic improvements, and then move to put costs to those. I'm already three slides ahead, so you can go at least one. There we go. So, the components of this study are, what do we have for existing conditions? We're not anticipating that we need a consultant to spend a lot of time on that. We have a great GIS system, we have a good idea of what we have, how old it is. And then, but when you get into what the project lists are attached to growth, that's where I think we really need a robust study to say, this is what we need and this is where we need it, and then get into a prioritization of those improvements and say this is when we need it and in which order. And then obviously, you can't predict all of the growth patterns of the community, but at least you know, depending on where our project lands, which of these scheduled and important projects they're going to, they're going to be feeding into. So, right now, you're stuck with a project by project, what do they do for off-site improvements, what do they contribute towards? And staff is stuck with the same, we're stuck with the same thing. So, I think this is a great step forward. Transportation Master Plan is something, when Emily and I were researching it, we sort of came across in other regions of the country. Granted, some of these communities are much larger than ours, but that's a common term. Some of the, some of the best plans we came across were in Washington State. They do a lot of these, so I don't know if they're required, whether they're not required here, but they were a little more prevalent. So if you look up transportation master plans, you will see some, some great examples of the plans people have put together. And it, the process will involve public, you can probably just jump to.
I'm just going to actually jump in here. So, some of these things that we see, existing conditions, project list, prioritized plan. So, right now, we would really be well-served by having a project list, which the study will move toward, and then prioritization of that list. I think at the last meeting, there was a question on how a traffic impact fee was calculated. That, that calculation came out of a smaller studies area, and it's been used for many years, but it's probably outdated. But because we don't have anything else to turn to, we have relied on that, that dollar amount. Other impact fees, as, as Pat has mentioned, have gone by specific locations of existing conditions and what the city has indicated that it needs for developments as they come forward. So, this would be really good, and like Pat said, it'll give us a tool where we can look at a project list, we can look at funding objectives, and we can look at what the enhancements were that were pegged from the study.
One key component of the RFP will that, will be that it's compliant with the state law that allows it to hold up for regional projects. So if Biddeford or Scarborough, Old Orchard, if one of our neighboring communities are doing a large project, there isn't a system for us to assess an impact fee based on a calculation, because that just doesn't exist for us right now. Under this, the idea would be one of the deliverables is a compliant impact fee structure that would allow projects in abutting communities to, or applicants in abutting communities to have to contribute towards our corridor stressors, as, at least along the fringe of our community. So the downtown for Biddeford projects, outer Route One for Scarborough projects perhaps. So, that's something we're missing right now. So as those developments occur in other communities, unless it's through the state traffic movement permit, it, there's no way for us to address it, address the impacts of, on Saco.
So, a real-world example of that is, if the planning board remembers, we have had some projects come forward where we say, if the projects in the Park North Traffic Movement Permit area, impact fees to Scarborough have to be paid as a condition of approval. That's because Scarborough had a formal impact fee system that they brought forward during the traffic movement permit to account for mitigation of trips going into Scarborough. So what Pat says is, we don't have that, we have no way of collecting fees or any type of mitigation from other towns and other cities as they develop around us and bring more traffic into our city.
One thing that's not completely clear, once we go out for RFP, is there aren't a lot of equivalent combinations of the planning and the impact fee. So the final scope, once we pick a firm or team of, team of consultants that, that submit, is just to hone in on the scope of what we want. And one part of sort of narrowing that scope, because we're anticipating, I mean, this, you could spend an awful lot of money on a study like this, and we just don't know what that, where that threshold's going to be until we get some pricing and ideas from the people who have put these together before. So, one thing that we have done, and I think it's just worth discussing, is we, we made a conscious decision to make this, at least the draft RFP right now, is addressing vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle connectivity and movement through the city. We're not including transit in this study. Part of that was just, there are a lot of regional transit initiatives and plans and studies that go through GP COG and PACS, so we didn't feel like adding that to the scope of this. We're not even sure that the funding's going to provide everything we're looking for related to the three that we did pick, so I just think it's worth, worth discussing. I mean, that's one thing we want to throw out to, this will be discussed with you tonight, council next week, and the Bike Pedestrian Advisory Committee to Council next Wednesday. I'll keep going with the last couple slides, but please jump in and interrupt if you'd like from here on out. So, we are looking to get this RFP out in the next month or so, and we're anticipating 12 months. We may get feedback during the, during the processing interviews with consultants that they may need 18, but we're, we're hoping 12 months would be nice. It would mean that we would get a product delivered back to us that we could then incorporate into the start of the budget process of the fiscal year '25 or '26, I guess it would be, budget cycle for any, anything that the city might be taking on outside of just the impact fee schedule that we're looking for.
Look, Pat, I'm kind of interested in the proposal to apply an impact fee to announce him as applying in Scarborough. So, are you saying that it's possible that Saco could attach an impact fee to that applicant?
I know applicants in Saco have had to pay impact fees to Scarborough. So, I'm not going to go too much further than that, because I don't know all the legal ins and outs of it, and I don't know what project thresholds might, it doesn't just mean that every, every house built in Scarborough is going to have to pay Saco, or anything like that at all. But for large, large, like the Downs, or, you know, a large, large project, I do feel like it would be brought to the table that if we've identified Route One or an intersection as being stressed by growth, and we've identified that we were, we're targeting covering 20% of that future improvement with impact fees, and you boil it down, yes, they would contribute to it under, there's a state law that governs that.
I can understand the principle behind it, but.
Yeah.
Man, the mechanics on that would be boiling over, I would think.
Well, and that's where the cost of this could get a little, I would like it to be all-encompassing for the improvements we're looking at as a community and not just an impact fee, not just establishing an impact fee, because to do the impact fee, you still have to have called-out projects with budget estimates that are, that your fee is based on or feeding into. But I am wondering just how robust is that level of effort and what's that going to cost us versus actually selecting and prioritizing all the projects in addition to coming up with the fee structure? So, could be a fee, there, there might be two phases to this when all is said and done. I mean, this could take a lot to get through, but I think it's a extremely valuable roadmap if we can stick with it and reach the end.
Once that you have the master plan, what's the process for adopting it?
So, the plan itself would probably go through, come through, there'll be several public engagement steps along the way, you know, at least four significant meetings with, lots of times, it's a combination of poster boards and data, and, you know, have residents or groups put up areas that they commute through, and what, you know, what are the pressures, what are the, what are the stressors on our different road networks? So there'll be a public engagement process, website presence the whole way through. Then, when the, we get the final report or draft report, it would go through planning board, council, and probably the Bike, Bike Pedestrian Committee. Maybe the, maybe it's robust enough that there's a committee, a subcommittee established just for this. Adoption would be basically folding the plan into, you'd have a fee schedule that gets adopted by council for all of the impact fees, just like the end of every budget cycle has a, has a, or the back of the budget has a fee schedule for every fee we charge. And then, it would also roll into our capital planning software. So we, we provide the council as staff a five-year capital plan. All of the projects identified in this will just roll in, and they're going to each have a funding profile. So right now, a lot of projects we do might have four or five, they'll have a general fund account, they might have an impact, they might have an impact fee contribution, they will have TIF contributions, and then hopefully, more and more projects have a grant component or a regional state funding mechanism. So, all of those would roll into the capital planning software, and that software allows you to look at project by project or funding bucket by funding bucket where everything goes.
And this plan will allow you to prioritize those projects?
The best ones, I've seen, you come up with a scorecard. So you, you, you do, you measure your, the impact of building a new sidewalk. So if we're going to compare two areas that don't have sidewalk, you look at, you might, so thus, the consultant will propose, staff and the community will revise what we think is worth different levels of points, but if you're within a school zone, it's worth, you know, you get points for that. If you're on, if you're putting a sidewalk on traffic volumes over 5,000 cars a day versus 1,000 cars a day, the 5,000 gets more points for that. So, you, you do, you're able to come up with a scorecard that kind of shows you where you should be funneling those sidewalk dollars for the most, the most bang for your buck from a safety or mobility standpoint. So, I'm hoping every project would have a, a score on that grid by mode of transportation.
And then you'd fund one or two of those projects each year?
Yeah, I think we would look to, some projects would obviously get shuffled in the mix every few years because of growth. So, something that wasn't a high priority in the initial plan could be revisited based on, if you could rerun it through the scoring matrix again, and our growth or mobility modes of transportation have changed, you could re-score that project. But we do try, we try to look five years out, but I will say the first one or two years of our five-year capital plan are pretty concrete projects that are going to happen. The last few, right now, without this longer-range planning tool, usually by the time they filter to the front, one or two, they might have got adjusted to higher needs at the time. This just shows the few phases we're looking at, you know, a lot of, a lot of data collection. Fortunately, I'm, I feel like we have a lot of great data, there's a lot of studies that have just happened, they're just not listed, they're corridor by corridor, or, you know, the Route 112 corridor has had a lot of traffic studies. The Route One corridor has, not so much Route Nine, Route Five, and some of the downtown Route One, you know, Elm and Main. So, this will fill in, the, the data collection will, will help us provide the consultant with everything that we do have, so that we're not recreating that, and then hopefully fill in the gaps. And then move on to phase two, where they're actually doing the, the master plan of where is the, where is the connectivity of our, of our existing network, where are we missing, what are the real pressures going to be for adding lanes or turn lanes or bike lanes through intersections that are going to grow? And then you get into the fun part of the scorecard and, and start actually putting scores to these. Project prioritization and scorecards will always be a fun step, because everyone has a different, everyone has a different selected mode of transportation or priority, but that's where, at least arriving at the scorecard before you put projects through it as a community is valuable, right? Because we can reach some consensus on what's important before we're talking about an actual street or in front of anyone's house, we agree on what our priorities are. And then the third part is obviously the impact fees. Our impact fees are not solely going to cover all of the tens of millions of dollars of projects that are, that are in this plan. So, what we need to do is, you know, we'll, we'll have a list of what this total sort of build-out is of the future, and decide what percentage of that is realistic to put on growth or private business or applicants in an impact fee.
Pat, do the current impact fees stay within your budget, or do they go into general funding?
So, anything you do as a condition of approval goes into, there's a, there's a separate fund, doesn't just sort of blend in. So, there's a, if, if we're doing an improvement like the Jenkins Road traffic signal that we're adding on the Route 112 corridor, that is leveraging some of the previous collected funds that planning, that the planning boards told applicants that they had to either, some of them are project by project, you will submit X, Y, or Z towards a sidewalk along this corridor. Other ones are more general, like the one, the formula that said, if you're sending trips to Industrial Park Road, you will pay, I think it was basically $200 if you're this close, or $500 if you're closer, and $1,000 if you're closer than that. But we only have that for that one little area of the community. So, on, other areas of the communities for other improvements don't have those. So, we'd be looking to basically build on what we've already done with the 112 corridor in the past, but make it across the city.
Also, by having a project list with these identified, Pat kind of alluded to it earlier, is we, city will have backup for like grant applications as to why something is needed in a certain corridor, which right now, we just, we don't really have unless it was part of an individual study.
Right now, if we get a last-minute call, so say there's a new federal program for a call for shovel-ready projects, staff is putting the best project forward that we, we believe, you know, meets the needs and will score highest in the national grant process and everything, but obviously, this library of projects will mean that it's backed by the community and all of the elected officials and boards, so it's a lot clearer which one we should, in the last minute, pivot and try to leverage larger funds for.
So, the, the project prioritization process will take the emotion out of it to some degree?
It's always the goal.
Well, I mean, that's the goal, right? Is to have a scorecard so you can say, well, this one scores higher than this one, so you don't, it's like when you're chasing a corporate client, we really want to get this client because of their name, but we know nothing about them, we're not really capable, so you, you would downplay that score. So in the case like this, a sidewalk or a sidewalk, which one benefit, would benefit the community as a whole better, right? Versus, well, we really want one down here versus over here. And the neighborhood's louder on this side than this side, but the scorecard says, right? So that should help?
Yes. My utopian little mind is picturing this study that the only emotion is going to be a. Yes, my utopian little mind is picturing this study that the only emotion is going to be excitement. And then we're all going to embrace the results and understand that they were thought out in a, in a systematic way.
Right.
And they're all going to help the community. So yes, that is, that's the emotion we're looking for with this.
And then to what Emily, you said, looking at a master project list with prioritization, then you can look at each one individually and say, is there a grant opportunity on this one or this one? Which would help bring that to the top of the list because now it's 50% paid for or whatever, things like that?
Yeah, there'd be some factors involved, but it would show like Pat's saying that there's some willingness to do certain projects and that we have a defined list and, and almost like a mini comp plan for, for transportation initiatives is what I, what I think about when I think of this.
So, so currently, is there a systematic process of looking at every project within Saco to decide, is there grant money or is there nobody that's really doing that? It sort of pops up one, one, one off?
So we have, we're getting a little bit more towards Saco specific or Saco wide, but we have a grants working committee that we are always looking for grants. So that was started, I believe, earlier this year. And so we have, like, as grants come in, they get vetted, come in, meaning if, if some of us, like Pat, might get notification of a grant program, I might get notified of a grant program, maybe Glenis gets notified of one. So we all tell the grants working group, there's five staff on it and I think there's five, maybe six now. And then they kind of vet, vet it through, see what's in the capital plan and see what's in the comp plan, see how those things tie in. In the case of, for one, one example, Water Resource had already done, like, they were in the comp plan. They did a resiliency study, they did a climate, a full facility plan. They were in the main climate council, so they had many studies that point into the need for the project. So I think that this will give us one other study to help us go forward with grants. The main reason for this though is really to look at the comprehensive system and see how best we're going to accommodate future growth needs and how we're going to plan out the city. The grants is kind of one piece of it.
So what's the final deliverable from the study? Is it a tool or is it a, a lot of words?
Words, pictures, colors, no.
Oh, yeah.
I think we will get new, so our GIS mapping system, one of the deliverables will be electronic new layers to put on top of that with the project. We're starting to do a little bit of that, but on a bit of a, a bit rudimentary level, we're, we're starting to overlay our projects. So a utility project, a roadway project, a sidewalk and a bicycle. If you can overlay all of them, then that project starts to have a lot more bang for the buck and blah, blah. So I see data sets that can populate our GIS mapping system, which we use to make a lot of decisions visually versus looking through a lot of words. So that's one deliverable.
I think we got a question earlier over here from Jeff about how we're going to use the study going forward. So implementation's going to be a little bit on the planning board. You know, after the study goes through with all of its process, if it gets adopted by council, then it'll be up to us, to the planning board and the planning department to make recommendations for impact fees based on whatever the study recommendations are and to then look at those transportation corridors when projects come up and see how they're impacting that, that potential project. That's part of the master plan.
And then, and then as far as charging other communities, we, so we've had, we've had projects in Saco that have been charged a impact fee from Scarborough, say. And theoretically Scarborough puts 450 houses on the border of Saco right on Route One. Theoretically that should have an impact on our roads and therefore an impact fee, correct? Is that sort of what happened in reverse?
So the case of Park North, they were assigned an impact fee through the traffic movement permit process. So I think it's for the, like Pat said, those larger projects and we would actually have a list of like, if more traffic comes into this corridor, Saco has planned that we need this, you know, X improvement or Y improvement. And where the new growth in Scarborough or Bitterford, wherever it is, is coming in, it will go through that planned corridor. So is there going to be an improvement? Is there going to be an impact fee? So a lot of that's done through that traffic movement permit process at the state level.
So it's a combination of new build, but also maybe a, an improved artery coming south on Route One? For example, if they enlarged it, improved it, therefore pushing more traffic this direction because of the improvements, then it would come into Saco and be, we wouldn't be addressing it if we didn't have money coming from Scarborough, correct?
So right now, what we're trying to say, staff is trying to say is when we get requests for traffic movement permits in other communities, we don't have a study that says this is the, you know, agreed upon plan improvement for the community.
Yeah.
And that's really what we're lacking, not only for those situations, but also for like development reviews.
But yeah, and one reason we're lacking is not just, I mean, you can't put just anything in place. It has to be, you have to have very called out projects. So we'll have a set of plans, they'll be somewhere between conceptual and preliminary design. We'll have to have that for each of these improvements that we want people to pay towards. So if it's a turn lane and right away acquisition and moving a sidewalk and moving utilities, you gotta, we gotta get far enough in each one of these projects to actually identify all of that. And that's going to be the trick is how much can we get? I mean, we spent $100,000 doing a full design for 6,000 feet of sidewalk down on Fairway Road. We obviously can't do that level of design in this study for every corridor and every road. So that's going to be the balancing point of what, what can we get out of this for $100,000 to $200,000 or what, you know, whatever we target. And I think, I'm thinking that we'll, we'll have to leverage different funding mechanisms because we're going to realize how valuable this tool is and need to finish it off and polish it off. So we may come back with revised, you know, part of it might just be, what do we prioritize for corridors for this initial phase one of the study, things like that? I don't think we really have a great way of knowing that yet because we're asking a lot. We're asking a lot of this study to provide us, you know, a 10 to 20 year look ahead of all transportation improvements. But also we'll have thresholds, so we'll know that the Industrial Park and North Street intersection can handle 5,000 more cars a day before you have to look at X, Y or Z improvements. We don't, we don't have that across all of our network right now.
So Pat, all these programs that you're talking about, are you hiring, hiring a company to, to assist with all those programs? Or is everything done in-house or is it a combination of stuff?
Combination will certainly, but this, this is well, this is well above what existing staffing levels at. I mean, I've got one engineer, I've got one engineer and had one engineer back when we had a $65,000 capital plan. And now we've got five to eight million dollars worth of projects going on. So there's no existing staff capacity other than we do have great data in place to provide them so we're not duplicating efforts. But this will certainly take a team of design engineers, traffic, traffic engineers to do the data analysis and then also, you know, even just, even just facilitating and the open public process and funneling all of that feedback and data. It's nice to have a third party doing that so it doesn't look, some of it's just having, having a new set of eyes and it's not funneling through an existing resource or point of view.
Yeah, I think this is great. I have about 473 questions. I think there's three of us specifically here that have been talking about this for five years, I think. So I think this, I think this has to happen to continue to move forward. So I'm excited because we could keep talking about this for a whole week solid. So I, I think it's great, I think it needs to happen. I like, I wish, I wish the timetable could get elevated a little bit, wish we could kind of speed it up. But I, not to be hypocritical, but I don't want to, I don't want to rush it. It needs to be done correctly, it needs to be done well, it needs to have the information we need. Otherwise, we won't be able to utilize it as necessary. So I think it's, I think it's good.
I agree, why didn't, why did we do this five years ago? I agree. We're going to really, we're going to push for 12 months. It's just, we're asking for a lot of, I mean, we're hoping if we, if, if staff helps with consolidating what exists for studies and take all the data points out of all of the existing studies that have happened and feed them to them in the right way, hopefully we can help accelerate what they need for time. But if it starts getting into they need a round of additional traffic counts to even make these decisions, then you're waiting for a certain times a year and you, that can start to drag out. But we're, we're going to really push for about a 12 month deliverable. I just, I, I could see that expanding a little.
We have a lot of traffic counts, so hopefully.
I know, right? That's, yeah, if we can get them all in one place, I have a feeling we shouldn't have to count too many cars.
Well, thank you, Pat, for joining us. Any other questions?
I do have one that's not related to this. There was a project that was, I think there was a bond that was passed maybe five years ago regarding improvements at the middle school for new fields, drainage at the softball fields, I think it was a new baseball field. Whatever happened to that? Because I remember going to Public Works, watched, looking at all the, the things regarding these projects and I'm pretty sure it was passed and I just, I haven't seen any work done.
There were about 12 projects passed in that bond and you just picked the only one that isn't done yet. Just for the record, all the other ones are done.
Of course.
The problem became, the problem became what was included in as an idea didn't necessarily fit in the space because it was very, very, it wasn't even really conceptual. So to fit the full size baseball diamond and this, it really hadn't gone through, that bond was put together with a lot of great ideas really quickly. That one hadn't maybe gone through enough preliminary design. And then on top of that, the next few years after that, that was a potential site for a new school. So it was pretty hard to go and invest, it wasn't millions, but hundreds of thousands of dollars into something that could be one of the prime sites for a regional school. So they're back revisiting how to best use those dollars now that that site is not the primary location being proposed. So that's why it got held up.
Yeah, there's major drainage issues and so forth, so thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Pat.
Appreciate it.
Okay, the third item in our workshop is a quick update regarding meeting recordings.
So I have another video to share with you. This one is short. So it's just a refresher on mics, speaking into the mics. And it's the same video council was asked to watch. As far as meeting recording, planning is working with communications on a path forward to go into enhanced meeting options such as streaming. So we just want to make sure that you have watched this video and it's a good refresher to talk into the mic. So I'll go ahead and play this for us. Hold on, let me make sure that we are connected with video, with sound.
I know, I was having a hard time hearing him.
Yeah, this, that's, that's the don'ts.
Is this the point of the video? The start of, I think this is the point, right?
So click share here. Do, is the volume on on the TVs maybe? Okay, so we will put this on the next workshop and make sure that the TVs are working before the next time.
We'll assume the point was, don't, don't sit back and talk like this, but talk like this.
Right, it was to make sure the mic is on and then to speak directly into the mic. And then many of us struggle with leaning back and it's just hard for everyone to hear.
And then shut the mic off when you're done.
We can hear you fine back there too.
But we don't know if it's Rob or Glenn talking.
Sorry, guys. Okay, anything else for the workshop, Emily?
Oh, thank you.
Okay, it is 6:16 and I will call to order a regular meeting. This is our Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 meeting of the City of Saco Planning Board. We'll start with some introductions and move on to our regular agenda items. So my name is Alyssa Booton, I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Matt Prevenzel, he's our Vice Chair. To his right is Jeff Grossman and Matt DeCiani. To my left is Joyce Larry Clark, our City Council Liaison Joe Gunn, and then Board Members Rob Biggs and Glenn Sharet. For city staff with us this evening, we have Emily Cole Prescott, our City Planner, and Lisa Harmon, our Planning Coordinator. First item we will review are the September 5th, 2023 meeting minutes.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the September 5th, 2023 meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce, is there a second?
So moved.
Thank you for the second, Glenn. Any discussion? Not hearing any, I'll call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Matt P?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll abstain because I was absent that evening. Motion passes 6-0 to approve the minutes from September 5th. Okay, next item is an update to public hearing guidelines. Emily, I'll turn to you for this overview.
Uh, thank you. So back last year, the planning board put together public hearing guidelines and information for attendees. This is the information that we have with every agenda, whether there's a public hearing just to give information to people who are attending the meeting. And it helps us with some guidance on, on next steps for the public hearings and the process of the public hearings. So what I'm recommending is just that we update this because at the time we were not video recording, we were only audio recording. So I just want to make it clear for people who are attending that it is just recorded, not only audio recorded. And then the other recommendation was just to say, you may also review the records or the meeting recordings rather than just listening to. So it's really just clarification, but I want to make sure the board saw it and has the opportunity to amend it.
Great, Board Members, any questions right now on this document? Rob?
Yeah, no, the only change is just the two, the audio versus just recorded is all we're changing. Then obviously the revised through date.
Uh, yep, and then on this page for meeting duration where it just says records.
Oh, right, yeah.
So it falls in line with just changing it from audio only.
To, to just recording. To, to just recording.
Just recording.
Yeah.
Any other board questions, comments?
I think this is appropriate. I guess my one thought is, is it, is it necessary to say anywhere that the, that the meetings may be video recorded for any reason? For any, for anyone that may not be comfortable being on video but wishes to participate or speak? Does anyone feel it's necessary to do anything like that? Or we just say it's recorded?
But we're not recording them, the city, on a video basis yet, correct?
No, we are.
The ci, the city is video recording.
Oh, video recording.
Yeah, as of August 15th.
Okay.
Um, certainly you can do video recording on here. I think we left it as just recording in case we get in a situation where we have to audio record. Additionally, we thought it was just easier to leave it as recording because anyone can bring in a video tape and record because it's a public meeting anyway.
Sure. Okay. I, I don't think it's necessary personally. I was just, just a question. A short discussion.
I don't have any further comments. I mean, I think this document helped us when we first adopted it last year, so. Anyone else?
So with that said, Madam Chair, I move to adopt the amended Saco Planning Board Public Hearing Guidelines and Information for Attendees Document with the amendment date of September 19th, 2023.
Thank you for the motion, Rob. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for the second, Matt P. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll call for a vote, starting with Matt D.
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Matt P?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you. Okay, next item is a discussion of our standard operating procedures.
Um, so as part of the Planning Board SOP, I wanted to have one more discussion with the board. One thing that we did not include in that standard operating procedures document was a general timelines list. So if you go to other communities, the applicant, there's usually like a, a schedule. So if the planning board date is on Z, then the date to submit materials from applicants is Y and the last date that we're receiving revisions is this date. So what I would like to do is come back to the board with all the dates through 2024 and have like a further discussion on adopting a timeline for applicants so that they know how far in advance applications are supposed to be received. We have a few conflicting sections in our ordinance. And now that we have a 14 day notice period, we want to make sure all those line up well and that we're very upfront with the timelines for application review. So before we, what, my recommendation is that we have a timeline and that you want to, before we put forward a timeline, wanted to just kind of have this conversation, make sure that the board was agreeable to this general direction. And then we can put something together to have it ready for 2024. Lisa's already mapped out our 2024 Planning Board meeting dates.
I, I think this is a great idea. The first question that comes to mind is how do we address material that gets submitted after? That, that seems to be an occurrence far too often. And I, I think everyone should have an appropriate timeframe to review the material that's come in. So I don't have a specific suggestion at this moment, but either material is held and it's, it can't, I, I don't want to say it can't be submitted. But there needs to be some sort of process. I don't, I don't ever want to say we can't submit anything. But just an appropriate timeframe. It, it's not, I don't think it's appropriate to be handed, you know, the documents. We don't have, we have to respond, there's not.
Yeah, so you've got applicant dates, deadlines saying, in order to be heard on such and such a date, you need to have your information in X days before, correct?
Well, the, the purpose of this is that we would lay out timelines for applicants. And then we would also look back at the timelines in the ordinance and recommend any ordinance amendments so that all of those lined up.
Right, if there's some ambiguity between what we're saying today and what was mapped out years ago. And then we're going to do the same thing for public comment, I would assume?
Uh, we would do it for, we'd have a general timeline and then would have like some guidance on that as well.
Right. I mean, realistically, it would be nice if you got it by Friday. So otherwise, if we have a meeting on Tuesday and we're getting information on Tuesday at noon and we're expected to be able to be knowledgeable about that, it's pretty impossible.
Well, yeah, so let us come back with some recommendations. But I just want to put this on here and let the board know what we were talking about at the Planning Department level and just make sure that we're all on the same page as moving forward with this. We are using the timelines in the ordinance now, but like I said, there's some clarification that needs to happen. And if you, if we want to map out a process that would be more along the lines of what you want to use, then let's do that and put it in place for 2024 and ask for any amendments that need to happen to make, to make that.
Right, because there may be some amendments that would be made to the charter.
The ordinance.
Yeah, because there's probably two or three right now that conflict with each other anyway.
Yeah, there are some conflicting timelines.
Yeah.
I like it. Good idea.
Okay, great. So we're going to hold the SOP book for a bit until we can get this timeline situation worked out and then report back to the Planning Board, either in a future workshop or department updates.
Are these, Emily, so you mentioned specific dates, but are they going to be more for an actual occurrence for us to review opposed to a, a meeting? You know, the meeting is first and third, you know, Tuesdays. Submission material must be received, you know, end of business day, two weeks prior. You know, sort of dates like that, that as dates move and may be flexible, things, things always change, that they're not hard set as a specific date. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Uh, yeah, that, that makes sense. We would look at both options and then we would have something that would be subject to change. You always have to have some flexibility in dates because you have to move a date, but, or add a date. But we would have a timeline with a calendar mapped out for 2024.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this? Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, last item on our agenda is any planner discussion and updates.
Um, I don't have a lot here. We are looking at 63 Watson Mill Road for a private road, 193 Jenkins Road application also for a private road. Bitterford, Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit has an amendment as well with us. September 25th, City Council has its final reading scheduled on LD 2003 Housing Ordinance Revisions. And we have an unhoused services study that we're working on with Bitterford that came out of a joint council meeting. So that has just recently kicked off. The purpose of that study is half Bitterford, half Saco. And we're looking at unhoused services throughout both communities. And there, there will be some recommendations back to council on that as to what can be done for the unhoused services population, for the unhoused population in both communities. So more to follow. I'll give you updates as we move along on that as well.
Great, thank you. Questions? Glenn?
Can you define what you mean by in-house services?
Oh, yeah, I should speak into the mic.
Yes.
Unhoused services, so for homeless people who are considered homeless.
You had said unhoused, is that correct? Okay, that's what I thought I heard. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. Unhoused as in housing insecure. Okay. Any other discussion, updates, questions?
I do have a question. It's related to, is this board allowed to enter into executive session at any point? I know the council had did that last night for quite an extended period of time for their discussions. Are we allowed to do that?
So Planning Boards can enter executive sessions under very specific reasons. And I would have to have legal work with us on that.
Okay.
Because we'd have to be sure to follow very specific procedural rules per state law. Yeah.
And I'm assuming it's, I'm assuming it's specific topics only, you know? I know there were personnel matters that they were discussing.
It's very rare that Planning Boards go into executive sessions, but it's been done in Saco.
Before, okay.
Once or twice before.
All right, thank you.
Matt, if you have the MMA Planning Board Digest, they have a chapter on that.
I'll have to take a look. Thank you.
Okay, so our next meeting is October 5th, correct?
Yes.
October 5th.
I'm probably going to be in Arustic County.
Okay. We still, I think that agenda's been set, correct?
Uh, we sent out the legal notice.
Okay.
That's been sent.
Okay.
On that agenda, we have the Lincoln Village Public Hearing and we have Chapter 230, Article 12, Stormwater Amendments, the minor review that we looked at in a workshop. Last meeting or the week, meeting before? I think it was the last meeting.
Okay, so we have two things that night. So Glenn, I'm going to update your attendance because I think when I originally spoke to you, you were going to be here, right? Okay, so I'll update that. Any other changes on October 5th for anyone?
I am still, I still will not be here.
Okay. That was the change from the original scheduling, okay.
Oh, but Glenn doesn't sit on Lincoln Village anyway.
Correct, yep. Okay, no other changes. Okay, it is 6:32 and we will adjourn for the evening. Thank you all.